All right. Um. Start the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting Tuesday, March 5th, first two thousand and twenty-two at six P. M. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Notice was posted on Friday, February twenty-fifth at Hometown Ace Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Make that motion.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries and we have an agenda. Pledge of allegiance, the flag, as you can see, is to our left Inga's right shoulder. And we can get started. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands, one nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Is there anybody that's on the Zoom meeting that would like to talk about an item that's listed on the agenda? And if so, give your first and last statement, your address, or you can choose to wait until that item actually comes up on the agenda and we can have you have comments then. So, Inga?
Yep, I know Julie Markwart, she is here from the Milton Historical Society to make a comment.
Okay. Hello. Julie Markwart is my name, twelve zero four Brown Drive, Milton. I am a member of the Milton Historical Society Milton House Board. And at our last meeting, we all discussed that we are very happy and thankful to the city for allocating us some money to, and we appreciate your support and we will use it well. And again, thank you so much for keeping us in there. We don't take it for granted. And that's all I have. Thank you. We're very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Yes. I like that they're conserving like energy by sharing the same laptop.
We thought about splitting it up just to make it look more legit.
Very family oriented council meeting as always, so we appreciate that. Is there anybody else?
Um, Stephanie, I see you just came out of, you just unmuted yourself. There we go.
Yeah, um, I was gonna say, I thought I was on the agenda, so I didn't know if I should have waited, or are we good to go?
Which agenda item?
The five-ten East Madison Avenue.
Oh, the snow removal?
Yeah.
So if you want to talk about it now or wait until it comes up on item number nine, I'll leave that up to you. What would you like to do?
Well, we can talk about it now. Um, so it snowed and it didn't get cleared, obviously. And I got a letter in the mail, like going over the city's policies, but I wasn't home to sign for it, which is part of the reason why the snow didn't get removed. So I went down Monday after work and I signed for the letter and that's what it was. And then like three weeks later, or whatever it was, I got a three hundred dollar ticket in the mail. And I thought that like I would have gotten a warning beforehand, not just a ticket, because the snow was removed and it has been since then. So I don't understand.
Okay. And then I think we'll talk about more the policy and procedures on number nine. But I, I do stay on and I do appreciate your comments.
Do you not get a warning then, or you just get ticketed right away?
Well, we're gonna talk about that on number nine. So during public comments, it's for the public to comment and then for the council to listen.
Okay.
So you can, but we can discuss it more at number nine.
Sounds good.
Please stay on. You're doing great. Thank you for coming and talking to us.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Anybody else before we go to Linda? Nope. Okay, Linda, the meeting dedication.
You know, there were so many things that I thought about that I could have dedicated this meeting to, but I just decided that the important thing that we all need to remember at this point in time and each of us and all of our community members is that we need to take care of ourselves. Today is National Peanut Butter Lovers' Day. So I thought that I should give you some facts about peanut butter, which happens to be one of my breakfast favorites. Um, so we have, um, peanuts are the twelfth most valuable cash crop grown in the United States with a farm value of over one billion dollars. And this is according to the American Peanut Council. Unlike other countries, the prime market for U. S. Peanut is in edible consumption and the marketing and production focus is also in that direction. Peanuts, peanut butter, peanut candy are some of the most popular products in the United States and Americans eat more than six pounds of peanut products a year, worth more than two billion in retail value levels. So peanut butter accounts for about half of the U. S. Edible use of peanuts, accounting for about eight hundred and fifty million in retail sales. Many ways to have them roasted in the shells, roasted kernels, or mixed nuts. Many people of the top-selling confectionery products in the U. S. Contain, contain peanuts or peanut butter. They're very popular in combination with chocolate. Peanuts and peanut butter are also used in the fire and a variety of cooking and baking goods. And just to give you some ideas of different ways that you can have your peanut butter, I can tell you bananas are great with peanut butter and toast, smoothie, popcorn, oatmeal, to add a little protein to it, to dip, to make an ethnic peanut sauce. And we all know about the one and only Rice Krispie Treats. And then, of course, one of my other favorite things to eat with peanut butter is apples. And it just so happens that we are celebrating Johnny apple seed in the month of March also. It's actually scheduled March eleventh. And one of the things. One of the things that this gentleman did, not only in teaching people how to plant their, their orchards, if their orchards were to go bad, he would actually take trips back and forth and help settlers and Native Americans throughout the process of these trees. An interesting thing that I have learned with John, with the story of Johnny apple seed, my great uncle was, he patented the yellow Jonathan apples. And I never knew this, but each app, each seed inside that apple will produce a different tasting apple than the original that it came out. I thought that was just, I, I never knew that. I know, I just thought it was really interesting. So in celebrating Johnny apple seed and peanut butter, um, let's, I'd like for everyone to kind of focus on maintaining your own physical health, including our citizens throughout the city. One of the things that we have, that we should be very proud of is how beautiful this city looks. And I'm just wondering, how many of us have planted a tree in your yard? Or maybe have you planted a tree in one of our local parks? It's a way to clean up our environment. It's a way for a peaceful place to sit. And it's always an enjoyable thing. So I dedicate this meeting to health and fitness and wellness.
Linda, that was very thorough. I really appreciate that. And as usual, you never cease to surprise and amaze me. Okay. And I just want to commend the council for embracing council dedications. And I'm sorry that I missed Devon's while I was on vacation. But since he's not here, I think we can make him do another one in April. Okay, mayoral proclamation, Women's History Month. So Chief, if you want your wife to come back and listen to us. Okay, Women's History Month, March two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, first woman mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim March as Women's History Month. And I will sign it this first day of March in two thousand and twenty-two. And I just want to be very clear, we would not be where we are today without the women. So I just want to amplify all the women, including Stephanie, who are on the Zoom call today. Cheers to you. Keep going strong. Okay. Approval of minutes for the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. I just think that that's Ashley Kungo crying right there, being overwhelmed by that proclamation. I saw her wife in that eye. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I will move for approval of the minutes and, and I will try to get Ashley a plea.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the minutes of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. All those in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Anyone opposed? All right, those minutes are approved. All right. Okay, this is something that we all look forward to every year. Gives us an opportunity to reflect on the prior year, all of the things that staff and council have supported throughout the year, all the progress that's been made, all of the challenges that have been overcome, and how steadfast and resilient the City of Milton is because of all of our dedicated staff and the city council that supports their mission and vision and values. So I will hand this over to Al.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that intro. Inga, are you gonna bring, bring the presentation up?
Yep, I'm doing it right now. Just want to make sure I have.
Okay.
Everything clicked correctly.
So as, it kind of, as Anissa said, this is a presentation that we give every year. I've done it every year that I've been here. So dating back, I think to two thousand and fifteen was the first time I gave a presentation like this. It's generally my favorite presentation to give each year. It's always good to look back, but I can tell you that it is difficult also to look back, especially in the way, oh, we're flying through it.
Sorry.
Especially in the way that, you know, the last couple of years have gone. It seems like everything just kind of melds together into one continuous stream of consciousness. But as we've done in the past couple of years, I'll give a general overview and then let each department head kind of tackle their individual departments' accomplishments and then, and then we'll wrap it up. And if there's, certainly if there's questions, we can, we can talk about those as well. So Inga, if you want to transition to the next slide. So I always try to kind of open up with just a general statement about twenty, about the previous year. And, you know, one of the biggest changes, challenges, and opportunities that we saw in two thousand and twenty-one was the Great Resignation, the Silver Tsunami, whatever the parlance of the day is today, we certainly experienced it in the City of Milton. We had nearly half of our Public Works Department retire. And we saw a few of our staff members at City Hall move on to other opportunities. So it was definitely a year of transition. Couple that with the pandemic and it was, it presented some challenges, but we are certainly coming through that, the pandemic and this transitional year, really, I, I think in a, in a, in a, in a great place for continued success. So with two thousand and twenty-two, we have a lot of new staff, some of them not as new as they were. Jenny's almost been with us a year now, but certainly a lot of folks, new folks, a lot of new faces down at Public Works, folks in new positions down at Public Works. You know, Carrie Cheeseborough moved from City Hall to Public Works. And then up at City Hall, we have a new city clerk and a new city treasurer since the last time we gave this presentation. So very exciting. And a new administrative assistant who took over for Carrie when she moved on to Public Works. And we have another part-time, new part-time person starting on Thursday. So again, two thousand and twenty-two will be kind of, hopefully, a year of stabilization and really, you know, galvanizing our path forward. So. Much like the last couple of years, Milton continues to grow at really an unprecedented rate. We saw thirty-six million dollars, an increase of over thirty-six million dollars in equalized value in two thousand and twenty-one. It's hard to put those numbers into, into context, but when I, for example, when I started back in two thousand and fourteen, the entire Tiff Six, so if you think about everything from United Ethanol to Penn Color to Charter N E X to the Quick Trip, that entire Tiff District had a value of thirty-five million. So we're essentially seeing our community grow every single year by that rate and it's in, on an increasing rate. We've seen our overall value increase by a hundred and twenty-five million dollars or thirty-five percent since two thousand and fifteen. So we've almost doubled our value in just a very short time. What does this mean for the, for the City of Milton? As folks who have been around me a long time know, I like to quote Shawshank Redemption here. It's get busy living or get busy dying. And that's the way our system is established in the state of Wisconsin. So when you grow, you are afforded great opportunities. And we saw our tax rate, the city's tax rate, decrease by over fifteen percent. Although we don't have records that were readily accessible to me, I'm gonna guess that probably has never happened before. To see a decrease in our tax rate by double digits to that degree is really something that is a testament to our growth, to our continued trajectory, and we're able to do those things while reducing the tax burden on the citizens. So growth is, is our only path forward in the state of Wisconsin, and we are certainly taking advantage of it. So we'll move into the departmental accomplishments in, in no particular order. I've not even really, this is probably established from a, a template from years ago. We'll move through each department and we'll start off with the police department. So if Julie Markwart wants to step in and provide an update?
You know, she hears enough from me about work that she probably could, actually. So I am not gonna read. I was, I was, we were joking in, in department head meeting today that I have the most slides. I have several. I don't have the most, but I'm not gonna read everything here to you. Most of these things are things that we already talk about as we provide updates through you at these meetings throughout the year. And as I looked back on our highlights for the year, it was one of those situations where I'm looking at, well, what did we actually accomplish? And until you put them down on a list, you don't recognize how much work actually got done. So pretty proud of my folks this last year. The pandemic management, of course, has been ongoing for all of city employees and staff and leadership. And we were right in that same boat, but thankfully did not have any major disruptions to our service throughout two thousand and twenty-one. And that's with one vacant position for all of the year and another one hitting us in August. We've talked here about the ongoing troubles with hiring and retention within police agencies, and that struck us pretty hard this year. But with the help of you all on council and some of the changes we've made in policies, we were able to hire two officers and sponsor them through the academy. And that's, from what I know, that's the very first time we've ever hired an employee and then put them through the police academy. And both are doing fantastic, by the way. Uh, why don't you go to the next one, Inga? So we had a number of programmatic things that we did. We have brand-new Defense and Arrest Tactics Training Program. Sergeant Geske is now a master trainer in that. Shop with a cop is always one of my highlights every year. I love coordinating that and getting together with the kiddos. Back into the schools, that's been a big thing too. Our, our Lunch with the Cop Program at Northside was pandemic impacted and we were really happy to get started doing that again. So getting in front of those fourth graders is always a joy for me. Lots of training going on. Uh, we'll do next slide, Inga. And one of the things, as you all know, one of the things that I'm most dedicated to is the mental health wellness of our law enforcement staff. And so big push this year with peer support countywide. It wasn't just with us. A countywide program was developed, headed up by the sheriff's office in hiring a clinician that could head a peer support program. And so we had all of our staff participate in that program and learn better how to take care of themselves. And we also have Sergeant Geske is now in our, basically our local representative and our department represents Milton in this countywide structure related to peer support. And that includes these, these coordinators share a twenty-four-hour cell phone where it gets passed from person to person so that any time of day, any day of the week, somebody's struggling, they got a number to call and talk to somebody right here in Rock County who can understand what they're going through and help where they can. So pretty proud of that program and glad that we're participating in it. And that's all I got. And to Ashley.
So, you know, the, I have been in the public sector now, I think, for seventeen years. And, you know, police departments have always had a challenging job and oftentimes a very thankless job. And, and with societal changes, you know, that has become even more of a thankless job in many ways. And our department continues to be very upstanding in their delivery of services. And, you know, I receive almost no complaints, or no complaints, not almost no complaints about how we conduct our business and how we go about and treat people with respect and in the provision of our services. And that is really, I think, due in large part to Chief Markwart and Deputy Chief Chesmore and Sergeant Geske and everybody who shares the same values that, to serve with respect is, is really the best way to earn respect. And I think we are very fortunate with our group that we have here in Milton. So next up, we have the Milton Public Library, the Fun Group.
Yes, we are full of sunshine and rainbows over at the library, according to Chief Markwart.
I think that, yeah, I was gonna say, that was said again this morning, yeah.
Well. Um, so two thousand and twenty-one was a lot about kind of getting back on track from two thousand and twenty. We were able to increase our circulation and our library visits, which saw drastic decreases from two thousand and nineteen. I always like to compare two thousand and nineteen because that was an amazing year for us. I'm hoping we will make our way back up to that. A big thing that happened, we went fine-free on juvenile and young adult materials, so we don't charge fines on those. We, even though we have our presence in our library building, but we also have a great internet presence online with our free online services. I list those all here. And then also our presence with our social media. So we are all over the internet. You can't escape us, honestly. We were able to open up to our full pre-COVID hours of fifty-two hours a week, seven days, fifty-two hours a week, seven days a week. So we are the only library in Rock County currently opened up on Sundays. And we became fully staffed with a higher D N E. So we are fully staffed and I have an amazing, amazing team. And I love them all. And then we also offered over two hundred and sixty programs, a mixture of virtual, in-person, and passive. We saw over five thousand participants with those programs. Next slide, Inga, please. Oh, you go back. Perfect, thanks. So we do a lot of collaboration. We collaborate with the Humane Society, the Gathering Place, Valley of the Kings. We collect the blankets for the, the large animals they have there. The Milton High School Ag students who offer programming. Like I mentioned, we increased our engagement on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Goodreads, Pinterest, and TikTok even. If you haven't been watching our TikToks lately, Ashley's doing an amazing job making some videos there. And we created over twenty, two hundred videos for YouTube. So we are still going strong with creating videos and being in a virtual space as we move hopefully out COVID here. We have held three successful fundraisers, our food truck rallies in our library, Loke Let's Dash for Books Fund Run, and our Friends of the Mountain Public Library has held three successful book sales and awarded a scholarship to a graduate and senior, which I absolutely love. And then we are out and about in the community at the farmer's market, at the Project Maria Art Jam, in the Nami Walks in Janesville. And then we, two thousand and twenty-one was a year of the grants. We received a couple grants from Thrive Nance, a thousand dollars for, to purchase materials about Africa and by African authors, a six hundred dollar grant from the Wisconsin Humanities Council, and a thousand dollar grant from the Milton Fund to create an underground railroad collection. And here at the library, we are always having fun. We're always laughing. And I think it's because of amazing staff that we have here. And I don't know if Inga, if you want to jump into on this, but this is Story Gardens obviously is a huge thing that is happening here at the library. In two thousand and twenty-one, saw a lot of progress behind the scenes. And like we mentioned, talked about a couple of weeks ago, we're hoping to see a lot of visual progress outside this year. But we had all these fundraisers, the Pinnies for the Pathway, which raised seventy-two-hundred, one hundred women campaign, our Story Walk, Very Hungry Caterpillar pieces, couple artworks that are being done, and then our Story Garden Store. And do I have, and of course, the Packers Grant. I always like to mention the Packers Grant and the American Family Insurance Grant we received as well. So a lot of progress behind the scenes and a huge shout to Inga for helping me with all the Story Garden stuff and our Story Gardens Committee and all the volunteers that helped us with our Story Gardens.
And then one other significant grant that we received was from the Wisconsin Arts Board, their Creative Communities Program for the Entrance Archway art piece that will be installed hopefully in May.
Yes. So that's it.
So at the onset of Ashley's presentation, I said that this is the Fun Group. And they are, they are a very fun group. They are an excellent team who work together very well. But sometimes, when you say the Fun Group, it But sometimes when you say the Fun Group, it may sound like that they are a nicety or frivolity or something of that nature. And they're really not. I, I don't think, I know I don't see them that way. I don't think the council sees them that way certainly. Um, you know, the community doesn't see them that way. They are the convener of our community culture. They are the ones who bring folks together in a place where there is a safe space where they can share ideas and time. And experiences with family members, friends, relatives. Um, it is really a, a great place that adds to the overall fabric of our community and the culture of our community. And but for the library, you know, there wouldn't be that opportunity for everyone. Certainly the Gathering Place is a wonderful, wonderful facility, uh, but they have kind of their niche. And, uh, the library is open to everyone, whether you are an infant or elderly, whether you are affluent or not. Uh, it doesn't matter. The library is a welcoming place that offers something for everybody. And we have the perfect team to effectuate those programs and that environment for our, for our community. And, and for our region, really. So it is, they are in, in a phenomenal group and in tremendous asset to our overall community.
Thanks, Al.
Next up, the Less Fun Group, Public Works. I think Mark's on here with his new haircut.
Um, so I think probably the biggest thing was all the changes we had with personnel here. Al kind of touched on it a little bit, um, but a lot of retirements, um, and a lot of new faces. Whether that's in the Streets Crew or the Utilities Division. Um, they're listed there. We adopted the Capital Improvement Plan. Implemented and working on the development of the GIS program. And then we've. Taken on some new technology to help operations. And if it's simple things like time sheets as well as being able to. Allow customers to do online scheduling for meter changes and other water utility appointments. And we've also, we were also able to provide all staff with, uh, a computer or a tablet that they can use for training or. Um, other things such as checking their email or, or doing, doing their time sheets. On the wastewater side, two of the projects there that we accomplished last year. Uh, the, the, the bigger one really was that kind of emergency clarifier repair where the clarifier basically broke. Um, and needed to be repaired. So that was, uh, a, a bigger project for the wastewater plant that was unexpected. And, uh, on the water side, probably the biggest thing last year was the LSL, the Lead Service Line Program. We replaced several lines, um, for customers in the city through the DNR Grant Program. Uh, it was just a direct benefit to our customers, um, that was available through the DNR. And that we were able to take advantage of and, uh, I think it went pretty well. Go ahead to the next slide. Thank you. Um, Streets, um, you know, a lot of its routine, you know, we do payment improvements and, um, preventative maintenance. St- uh, marking the street lines, look at, uh, we purchased some different equipment to. Um, improve the efficiency and the quality of the pavement marking equipment. For the park side, we were able to. Replace one of the oldest moors or maybe it was the oldest moor and, um. We did it under budget. So that was a, a good accomplishment for the parks equipment. Um, fixed the score shack, got, um, Goodrich Park, some of the lighting, installed the disc golf equipment. Um, bike racks at various locations. And, yeah, worked with the school district on Central Park. Well, that might be the last slide or is there another one, Inga? That's it.
Last one. So obviously we will never. And, and I, I can say this with a great deal of certainty. We will never replace the institutional and historical knowledge that we've lost in that department. In 2021, um, as we all know, Howard Robinson was instrumental in creating this community. And ushering this community into a new, uh, era, uh, but you know, in addition to, uh, you know, how we, there was Ken Verrick. Ward Edwardson, Ron Griffin, you know, a lot of folks who, who were familiar faces to everybody in this community. Retired and we're happy for them and we are, we're thankful for their service and we are proud of, and I'm sure they are proud of the work they've done. And we'll never be able to replace that. I mean, Mark, Howie was here for 34 years. Mark says he's going to be here for, for 35 because he wants a building named after him. But, you know, I, I don't know if we can ever really count on that type of longevity ever again. Uh, but what we did gain, and this is not meant to be any kind of deprecation towards our previous, uh, you know, tenured employees, is we gained new perspectives. Whether it be Noah in water or Mark, uh, leading the show, uh, at, at Public Works. Or even, you know, folks who moved into new positions like Paul Smith and Kerry Cheeseborough. They brought with them new perspectives, new ideas, uh, things that they have seen either in other places or have seen behind the scenes. And we are working to, to continue to grow and to continue to better ourselves. And with the new folks in place, uh, we are already seeing those types of things, uh, come to fruition. Mark reviewing, uh, ordinances, GIS is still a very new and, and infant concept here at the city of Milton. But that will be an incredibly powerful tool, uh, as we move forward and, and the, and the group is embracing it. And, you know, I, and I like to use Justin, uh, Shasi at, at, in, in wastewater as an example. He's an individual who worked for us, left. And then came back because he got to see something else and realized that Milton was really a special place. Um, so, you know, we're, Public Works is, is again, uh, it's going to be challenging to ever replace the historical and institutional knowledge. Uh, but time marches on and we have a great group that, uh, will continue to, uh, work hard and, and, and show improvement. And, and do the best that they can every day for the citizens of Milton, so. City finances, I don't know Kelsey died, I don't know if it's fair to put Kelsey on the spot. She's, she's only been here since October, but, um. You know, certainly, uh, you know, she was here for the end of the budget process. And, and, uh, we were able to again, uh, complete a successful budget process, one a very successful budget process that. Uh, again, only saw us increase our, our, uh, uh, our levy by, by $3,000 while decreasing our tax rate by 15%. And one of the things that the council has been very, um, you know, keen on, if since, since the very first day I walked in the door. Back in 2014 was our debt, uh, service ratio. And we once again saw that drop from 44% to roughly 42%. And it bears repeating year after year after year, uh, that. This number was at 82% in 2014. 82% is an incredibly elevated debt level. One that was jeopardizing our bond rating, one that was going to make it almost impossible for us to do things like a capital improvement program. Or purchase land for development or improve our facilities or look at a concept like Story Garden. And through guidance from the council and, and really a lot of great effort by Dan Nelson. Um, we have continued to see that number go down and we will continue to see that number go down. And that has a direct impact on the taxpayers as debt service is paid for by tax collections. Uh, so we're proud to see that number continued to decrease. Uh, we're below the 50% number for two years in a row, which is where we want to be with our new debt policy. It's been nearly a decade since we were there, probably even longer than that. Um, so it's, it's something that, uh, you know, we certainly continue to keep an eye on. Uh, we certainly are very attuned to it, but we have a lot of breathing room that we never had before. And that has afforded us a lot of great opportunities here in Milton. Kelsey, do you want to add anything?
No, I'm good. I think you covered it.
Okay. Jenny's not going to get off so easy. She was here for most of 2021. So we'll let Jenny kind of take the, uh.
Yes.
Portions.
Yep. So I did miss the February election. However, it was just right after that. Um, so 2021 was a relatively small year for elections. There was only two elections, one held in February and one in April. Uh, we had a total of, uh, 1,127 total votes. Um, as you can see, we still had 476 votes that were cast absentees. That was something that because of the pandemic still was increased at that point. We had a total of 54 new voter registrations throughout the year. Um, a portion of that actually came from the National Voter Registration Day where we did have a, in office and celebration. It wasn't highly attended, however, um, it would be videos and information was sent out on Facebook, the, and our, our other social media. Thenews and we, uh, probably about half of those did come from that voter registration day between, uh, that day. And then the next week, um, we also received, uh, about 15 different absentee ballot requests from that. Um, it did, even though it was smaller at that point, um, smaller election year, it did offer a lot of time to do some extensive training. So the election officials were able to participate in Zoom trainings, um, and then also our administrative assistant, Ashley. She was able to become certified in Wisvo, so she did complete her data entry certification. So she'll be ready for this year. And then Inga, if you want to go to the next slide, I'll just highlight a couple of things on there. So I did go through for, um, pet licenses and maybe pandemic related. We did go up almost 115 pet licenses from the previous year. And then title searches with the housing market, we did increase that slightly. So still had a lot of different changes, um, in, within the city. And then I'm not sure if Kelsey wants to go through any of the finance transactions.
Um, we issued 656 checks and 871 ACHs. Totalling about 10.75 million. Um, the dollar amount is very much in line with 2020. But we have noticed a flip that we are submitting more payments via ACH and credit card than we have in previous years. Um, we've continued to process payrolls for not only the city, but also the gathering place and the fire department. Um, and our, I believe our credit card transactions have been going up year after year as well. For types of payments that we've received from customers, um.
And Kelsey, it looked like it's about 700 more credit card transactions than last year. So it seems like even though we had more people coming back into the city, then we still were using those credit card transactions. Either over the phone or e- over the phone on the counter or the online too.
Yeah. So City Hall was, um, you know, we're still trying to figure out what's the new normal at City Hall. Um, you know, even pre-pandemic, we saw a continued decrease of kind of walk-in traffic. As society changes and as opportunities to make payments and conduct business online continues to increase, uh, there is a societal shift. Now, after the pandemic is starting to kind of be in, in the waning hours, hopefully, um, we're, we certainly. Uh, see even less and less traffic and I don't know that that's going to pick up maybe ever again to the way that it was. Which is totally fine and it's great that people are taking advantage of those opportunities. Um, it probably means that there's an increase in phone calls, uh, as people have questions as opposed to just stopping in. I think part of folks' daily routine or weekly routine was to stop into City Hall and, and that probably isn't going to be the case anymore. But nonetheless, we remain very busy, uh, as we continue to see, uh, transactions increase, population increase, uh, opportunities increase. Uh, interactions increase. So it's just a different way of doing business than what we had probably pre-pandemic. But that, that pattern had already, uh, started to emerge prior to the pandemic, so. In terms of economic development, we've talked a lot about that at the beginning of the, uh, presentation. Um, again, saw, you know, $33 million worth of new valuation in 2021. That was up from 27 million in 2020. Over $31 million of private and commercial industrial development and investment. Um, three new TIF development projects, nine new business startups. Um, and I did forget to mention on this, we, uh, also took advantage of the WEDC bounce back grant program for TLC restorations. And, uh, also issued, I believe, four, uh, commercial facade grants. And I think a dozen residential, uh, improvement grants. So those are all contributing to the betterment and stabilization of our neighborhoods. And our, uh, downtown regions. So, uh, economic development, uh, big and small in the city of Milton continues to be robust. Next up is just kind of a quick little video that Inga put together that is pretty awesome, so.
And there is music with it. So if you can't hear it, stop, you know, let me know.
It's a little quiet. So as we kind of started this presentation, it's hard to remember what you can all do with a year, 365 days seems like a long time. But during the pandemic, it seems like every day runs together. But when you see a video like that, it really reminds you of what we're able to do. When we all stick together and work together and kind of keep our eye on the ball, which is making Milton, uh, the community that people expect. And want to live. And, uh, that presentation really i- is a great way to surmise. Uh, how we're able to do that even in trying times. And it's because of the great groups that we have, the great employees that we have at City Hall. The support for, uh, uh, throughout the entire organization, the support we get from the council and the support we get from the community. We really are, uh, blessed to be where we are. And, uh, it's a really cool video to, uh, to remind ourselves of what we, what we're. What we're able to do. So looking at 2022, although we're. So looking at twenty twenty-two, although we're at the first day of March, there's still a lot of time ahead of us. The virus, although it seems to be hopefully waning and waning for good, will continue to present challenges for us. There continues to be uncertainty at state funding levels related to the twenty twenty-three budget process. It's going to take a long time for the pandemic to kind of ripple through the entire system. And we haven't talked about this yet, but obviously the fire department will be the main, probably initiative story and, and effort that is undertaken by many people within the city organization as well as the common council and the surrounding town boards. We have a path forward. We are hoping that that path forward is a successful path forward. But we recognize that there are many, many challenges that are yet to face us and we too will, you know, face those head on and, and come out better on the other side. We talked about debt service and although we're down to forty-two percent, that is still a number that we want to see decrease because of the impact that it has on the tax rate. The more we are able to decrease that, the better position we are in terms of taxes and the better position we are in terms of funding future projects and, and continuing the success that we have. There continues to be challenges with balancing service deliveries with priorities versus incidents. The onset of the strategic plan certainly helped to kind of sharpen our focus. But there are, and it's human nature, easy distractions and things that can kind of detract from that. And we'd kind of need to keep our eye on the ball in that regard, too. We want to continue to work to increase our tax base. As I talked about, when we grow, we're able to do many great things while we're reducing our tax rate. And we want to keep that trajectory headed in an upward way. And as the economy continues to undulate, we are hopefully remaining a very stable and, and upward moving community. And last but not least, we want to maintain and preserve the Milton way of life. It's a ubiquitous term that really doesn't have a definition, but you know it when you see it, you feel it. Everybody who's lived here for a long time understands what that means to say that. Many people continue to comment about how they love the fact that Milton continues to be, have a small-town feel to it. And we respect that and we want to continue to represent that. Investments in our downtown, investments in our neighborhoods are ways that we are tackling that, you know, on a daily basis. Vacancy rates in our downtowns are at an all-time low. Sometimes they're at zero as the year progresses on. And that's a way to continue to preserve that Milton way of life. We're seeing a diversification of our downtown businesses. We're becoming a tourist destination more and more every day. And that is another way to preserve our Milton way of life. But really, the Milton way of life is about having a community that works together, that sticks together and represents the values of those who live within it. And I think we've done a great job of that and hopefully we'll continue to do that. And with that being said, we look forward to twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three and beyond. With the new Buzz Lightyear movie coming out, it's Infinity and Beyond. So that's all I have.
I just want to thank staff and their, their hard work. You can see that there, there's a great example of everything that all of our departments do. And it, and it is not all inclusive, right? So they can't possibly put everything they do in one single presentation. But I think this is a really great example of all that they do and continue to do. I appreciate all of them working on the, the year-end review together. I think it's important for them to be able to look back and see everything that they did. For the council to see that, and most importantly, for the community to see how their local government is working for them. Every single day, everything goes back to our values, our strategic plan and the services that we provide to our community. And we always have committed and dedicated staff to doing their jobs. And I, I can't appreciate that more than what I do, you know? It's been, it's been a tough couple of years. And all of our new staff and, and those that retired too, they were all a big part of it. Nobody thinks that while they're an elected official or they're in a governmental position, because they're going to work through a pandemic, like nobody thinks about that. And yet, we expect everybody to step up to the plate and manage all of these different challenges and all the different things that we all had to think about that we never had to think about before. And we did it. And congratulations. And I look forward to two thousand and twenty-two continuing. We'll see what two thousand and twenty-three brings us, but I just want to thank everybody. Great job. We're very proud of you. All right. Item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding snow removal fees, specifically five-ten East Madison Avenue. And we did have, yeah, Stephanie, there you are. My box has moved. That often, or sometimes at least happens and then I lose people. So I'll let Al or Mark kind of talk about this a little bit. This is something that we've tried to work through over the past few years and we're still trying to figure out a good way to kind of keep the expectations up and follow our ordinances.
So as, yeah, this is kind of the, the annual snow shoveling conversation. It seems like we have every year. And, and again, as we talk about every year, this is strictly a policy decision. Staff effectuates the ordinances as they are written. If the council believes that there should be a different ordinance or practice, then that, that kind of direction is, is passed on and then we effectuate that. And that's ultimately what happened last year when we had this conversation. The council directed the Public Works Committee to review our processes. And the Public Works Committee came back and recommended that we do away with the re-inspection fee portion of it. And in the situation that we have here, based on the facts, snow fell on the twenty-fourth. Residents have until the twenty-seventh to clear their sidewalk, which is sixty hours. On the twenty-eighth, the sidewalk was inspected and not cleared. A letter was sent out to the property owner and twenty-four hours later, the sidewalk was cleared by city staff. And then the letter was received by the property owner on the thirty-first or signed for by the property owner on the thirty-first. We send out certified letters and that was the direction that was given by the council back in two thousand and sixteen. And that is the process that we have. If there is direction to change that process, then we will do so.
Stephanie, I just wanted to get back to you to see if there are any additional comments that you, that you had to share.
So, yeah, you don't get a warning or anything? You just get like a three hundred dollar ticket the first time it happens?
If you're looking for me to answer that, no, there is, there is not a, there is not an ordinance or requirement to send, even to send a letter. The letter is, is meant to be that notice, but ultimately the sixty hours or three days to clear the sidewalk, council in the past has believed that that has been sufficient. So no, there is not a, a warning per se. That went away last year by direction of the Public Works Committee and the Common Council.
Larry?
I just want to point out too, I think in, I think in many municipalities, at least, some of the municipalities that I've lived in, they, they really just enforce the ordinance. They don't, they don't even really notify the property owner that, you know, that time has expired. I think that's correct in many municipalities. So the letter we send is, I, I see it as a wonderful courtesy. I realize it's after the fact, but.
Bill?
Just wondering, Stephanie, were you aware that there was an ordinance requiring snow removal within a certain period of time?
Uh, no. I just moved here about a year ago. February twelfth was my one-year mark.
You know, the, the ordinance is there for a reason. The city doesn't like to clear sidewalks. They would prefer not to do any. But the fact of the matter is that we're trying to create a safe environment for, for people to, to walk. I don't know whether what you were getting at in terms of a warning was a pass on the first time it happens. Was that sort of where you were going?
Well, yeah, like a warning, like I wasn't aware. And I wasn't in town either, so it just kind of leaves me stuck with nothing.
Yeah. It, it's, you know, unfortunate, but at the same time, I think, you know, the ordinance is there. There's been notification of that. You know, I've seen it mentioned on social media, the city's website mentions snow removal and so on. So the information is out there.
Stephanie, are you a homeowner or a renter?
I'm a homeowner.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? And what specifically are you asking from the, from the council?
Well, I just wanted to clear that up because I thought it was a little peculiar, just to get a three hundred dollar ticket in the mail. I was not expecting that.
Yeah, yep. So.
Go ahead, Stephanie. I didn't want to cut you off. You were going to say something? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Well, the only question I had is, you, you said you were out of town. Were you out for quite a while? I mean, not that it was my business, but more than the three days, I'm assuming you were out of town. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I had to come back Monday after work and that's when I finally got to pick up the letter. I didn't even know.
Yeah.
I saw a sticker on my door and I was like, oh, okay.
Okay, so you did see a sticker on your door, I see.
Yeah, that's how the post office, that's how I knew the post office came, because they left like a little sticker on the door and said, oh, we tried, you weren't home. It's available for pickup this day. So then I went.
If we had left even a, a door hanger or some kind of notice from the city itself, that wouldn't have solved this particular situation then either, because you weren't home, right? Is that correct? I mean, in fairness, fairness.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want a clarification of that. Thank you.
Well, I guess, um, what happens from here? Because I didn't pay it. I was waiting to talk in this meeting and it was due today. So is there going to be like another fee on that?
Have we in the, I don't know if we've done this in the past. Have we done payment plans on these? Or I, I know on other things we do, but I don't know that we do on this.
Yeah, I'm not aware whether we have or haven't. I don't know by ordinance if we can. I would have to look to our attorney for that. Typically, when we have payment plans, it's, it's created by resolution for like assessments and things of that nature. But Attorney Schrader, I was going to ask you the question that Stephanie had asked anyways. So maybe it's a two-for, two-for-one for you.
Well, I haven't reviewed the ordinance, so I can't answer that at the moment. I can, I can review the ordinance. Just to clarify, Stephanie, this is not a ticket. What it is, is there's a special charge that's imposed for service that's rendered for your property. So you're, it's not like you're getting a ticket from the police department. That's not what occurs is, is there's that. And it provides that if it's not paid, then it will end up as, as an assessment on your property. So what you'll want to do is make arrangements for payment as soon as you can. Realistically, it's not going to be a special assessment on your property this fast. So you can, you can certainly make periodic payments. There's nothing that forbids periodic payments, but you just need to make the total payment of three hundred dollars at some point in time before it's specially assessed and that, that will be some period of time. But the, the city had determined they weren't going to, going to re-inspect, which is what they had formally done.
Yeah.
You know, which, which saves you significant amount of you and everybody else, not just you. But, but anybody that's receives these, and there are more than you that receive them, that, that, that's another one hundred and fifty dollar charge as well each time they inspect. So they're not doing that. So it must have taken them two hours then to clear your, your sidewalk?
Um, no. I wouldn't assume so. On the sheet of paper, I don't know, what do you call it? Not ticket, but on the sheet of paper I got sent. It was a hundred and fifty dollar fine to begin with. And then they gave me another hundred and fifty dollar reinspection fee.
Oh, I was wondering about that. Well, I guess, Al can comment on that as to whether or not the, given the city's position, it wants to impose the reinspection fee versus charging the one hundred and fifty dollars for the, in addition, excuse me, to charging the one hundred and fifty dollars for the snow removal. But.
Yeah, I believe that that was the direction last year was to remove the reinspection fee. I'm reading the letter that was sent to Stephanie right now. Yeah, so there was the hundred and fifty dollar fee for, to, to, for the first inspection and then a hundred and fifty dollars to shovel it. So there wasn't a reinspection fee.
Is that just the little white sheet with two lines on it or is that the whole paper?
It is a letter dated one twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two that outlines the date of snowfall, date of inspection.
So that's a whole letter, right?
Certified letter you got.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. What the, I'm just going to, I know it's not a ticket, but I'm going to call it that for lack of better words. The ticket I got in the mail was just two lines across a whole blank sheet of printer paper that said the hundred and fifty dollar fee and then another hundred and fifty dollar fee.
Yeah, that's the per lot minimum fee is a hundred and fifty dollars. So there was a fifty dollar inspection fee and then a fifty dollar shoveling fee, a hundred and fifty dollar shoveling fee, yes.
So, can you explain what? So in the past, we were doing four hundred and fifty dollars, so a hundred and fifty dollars to go out, a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, I believe that.
It sounds like we're still collecting the same amount of money.
I don't believe so. I'd have to go back and review what the, what our past practice was. Again, this is the kind of the loss of institutional knowledge. I may be wrong about this, but I think there was a hundred and fifty dollar fee for when the violation occurred. Notice was sent, then another hundred and fifty dollar fee was charged for a reinspection fee. And then there was the shoveling fee.
When I came home, all there was was salt on the sidewalk. It wasn't shoveled. So I don't know about that.
There is a photo that was taken that was included in the property file that clearly shows there was snow.
Yeah. I saw the photo, but when I came home, I saw a whole bunch of salt on the sidewalk. So do they shovel and salt or?
Typically, yes.
Okay.
So if I understand what, and correct me if I'm wrong, council's and has not made any motion on any action here. But if I understand what Mark said, that if you don't pay the three hundred dollars, it would be on your property tax bill. Um, you could make payments on it through. Um, you could make payments on it throughout the year.
Correct.
And then it wouldn't, and it's, I, I. It doesn't sound like there's interest charged if it's on the poverty tax bill, or is there interest charged?
Once it goes on the tax bill, it would be, yes.
Okay. So essentially, you would have until. November to get it paid? Kelsey?
So the invoice that was sent out, it was sent out on February seventh and it had. Net thirty days, so the actual due date of the invoice is March ninth. And then if it's not paid by then, it does get one and a half percent interest on the outstanding balance each month. And then if it's not paid. It would go to the property taxes in November.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the ordinance here and. There seems to be terminology for inspection and reinspection. I don't know whether Mark has got that in front of him there or not.
Yeah, I would have, I would have to go back and look at what the Public Works Committee recommended, because Inga had mentioned to me that. Their recommendation was to not change our process, but we did waive the reinspection fee last year for Long Henry. So perhaps the process actually didn't change based on the recommendation from the Public Works Committee.
And I, I think the process, to your point, Bill, is that Public Works goes out and inspects it initially and says, yes, it hasn't been, been shoveled. And then they notify us to send the letter and do that process. And then they'll go back out a couple of days later and re-inspect it, that's that reinspection. If it's been cleared, then there's no charge, they just go about their business, I think. I think that's the process, but if it hasn't been cleared yet, then there's that reinspection fee and the cost to, to clear the sidewalk for that property owner.
So, and this is, um. After, so they wouldn't go out until after the, the time period is up.
Correct. After the sixty hours.
Yeah, so after the sixty hours, they could just go out. Shovel the sidewalk.
Yes, they have the, they have the right and authority to do that, yeah.
And then just charge a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep.
And that because of they. So if the, the homeowner comes back before the second reinspection and shovels it, it would save them a hundred and fifty dollars, right?
Well, my question for Mark is, is in terms of the ordinance and the language. The, the one hundred and fifty, uh, uh, under. Section three. Has a first reinspection, one fifty. Be to second inspection, reinspection. Two hundred, it, it refers to reinspections. And my question is, is there a difference there in terms of that initial determination that. It hasn't been. Hasn't been shoveled.
Yes, you're, Bill, you're looking at one hyphen fifteen, correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I, I am too, just to make sure how that interacts with sixty six hyphen seventy one, sub D. The initial inspection, there's no charge for that, under one hyphen fifteen, it's the reinspection. In other words, if there's an inspection and there's a direction to do something and it's not done. And there's a reinspection.
Okay.
And it's still not done, then there's a charge for that reinspection.
Okay, and so what happened was, there were two, two inspections that took place, an inspection. And a reinspection plus the shoveling. Uh, which is what totals the three hundred.
I. Apparently. Yes.
Oh, so if they would have went out on the first time and it would have been shoveled. We would have charged the hundred and fifty.
Right, if they, if after the additional initial inspection that, after sixty hours. And before they came back and shoveled it, it was already shoveled, and there, when they came back to see if it was shoveled, there wouldn't be any reinspection fee.
But you would still get charged a hundred and fifty?
No, because at that point it would have been shoveled. But by that point, eighty-four hours would have passed. I mean, we're talking about, now we're approaching five days after snowfall. I mean, at, at what point do we just do away with the ordinance altogether? I mean, I'm not trying to be glib, but. Are, are, are we giving, we get far, far, far more complaints about the generosity of sixty hours. For sidewalks to get shoveled, we get dozens of complaints every year about that. Than we do from individuals who don't clear their sidewalks after eighty-four hours. So this is a policy decision. And if the council wants to change the process, then we can change the process. But I promise you, no matter what we do, we will be right back here next year.
Yep.
And that's fine. But we belabor this every single winter. And it becomes confusing, as we have seen here tonight. And it becomes a gigantic distraction for staff. Do we want sidewalks cleared or not? Yes or no? I'm assuming the answer is yes, do we want them cleared in a timely fashion? Eighty-four hours? Most other communities, when we did this research last year during this debate, is twenty-four hours.
Yeah, that's true.
So, again, this is a policy decision, but it is exhausting.
I think the reason we have so many, so many people come back is because it's three hundred dollars. Like, I think that, that, oh, that's the consistent thing that happens, is people come back. And we've had more than one person that just moved here, in fact, many of these are, are new members to the community. And their first interaction with the community is a three hundred dollar fine. And they just want to understand, because it's a three hundred dollar fine. So I don't know how, I don't know how to fix it, because we absolutely do have to have our sidewalks cleared, and there does have to be. An expectation that our sidewalks are cleared. But I would say like the last three times. You know, at least two of them have been people that have never lived here before. And I don't know that it's our responsibility, I don't know whose responsibility it is.
It's Wisconsin, it's Wisconsin and it snows in the winter.
Yeah, but I feel that, it's, it's three hundred dollars. So for people on a limited income, that can be, that can be challenging, so I do emphasize, empathize. Because it's, it's a three hundred dollar fine. So, that's mostly what we hear is the, the amount of the fine, Linda?
Uh huh, we have always had people complain when it gets down to the point that they have to make that payment. You know, the bottom line is we promote a safe community. And this is Wisconsin. Our Public Works Committee just looked at this last year, I think if I remember right, I'm the one that made the request that they did look at it. And I don't believe that we should be looking at this every year. And Stephanie, I don't know if what you're asking us to do is to say that you don't have to pay this. Because I certainly would be opposed to that, and I'll tell you, the primary reason for that is. This information came out in the water bills. We put this information out about the snowfall way back in September, or October, November. In those newsletters, and if you're gonna be gone in the wintertime, just like everybody else, I mean. We have, you have to be responsible for that, and I'm sorry. That it, it might be a little bit hard for you, but I, we obviously do try to work with people. So that you can pay it in a manageable way. When, how much, how much information do you need to put out? To tell people that in the wintertime, when there's ice and snow, that you have to keep your sidewalks clear? It, it's just, I, I don't, we can't go knocking on the door, and. Even with this discussion going on today, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be pretty franked about this, I just feel like. We need to just tell people, no, we have to pay the people that come out and do these inspections. We have to pay the people that come out and take their time to do this. It's a cost to the city taxpayers, that's why you get fined. Because somebody's got to take care of that work for you, because we're a city and we have sidewalks and we're, we live in Wisconsin. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be real, you know, mean about this, because I also have sidewalks to shovel. But it's what you have to do. So I don't know what kind of emotion that you're looking for on this, are, is the request. To change the ordinance, or is the request to deny? The, the charge, or? What exactly is the request? I, I'm sorry, I just, I don't understand.
I guess I was just looking for more information. Because like I said, when I first brought this up, it was. Kind of peculiar to just get a three hundred dollar ticket. I don't know where.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and it, just because we have somebody that comes, that comes to the council and they have every right. To come to the council and ask for, for clarification. We are elected to serve them. It doesn't mean that we have to take action, and it doesn't mean that we have to change our ordinance. To have somebody come to the council and ask for clarification. So I am not opposed to the public coming to the council and asking for clarification. I don't. Think that we have to necessarily have action on anything. If somebody comes to the council, right, you can just, it can just be. An item on the, on the agenda, I, I don't think we can. Look at the ordinance every time, but I certainly don't want to discourage people from coming to the council. And asking for, for clarification, and I guess we shouldn't make up assumptions. That they want us to do anything different, as much as just asking a question, so maybe we took it further than what. Stephanie really even was asking for, as much as she was just trying to understand what the process was. Larry?
If I may, Stephanie, just a question for you. Is this your first time owning a home? And, and secondly, have you ever rented a home or rented a place where you had to shovel? So I'm just, it, it's clarification for me as we go forward. In the future with our ordinances and such, I mean, do you have, is this your first time owning a, a home, I guess, is my question in terms of. Responsibility for taking care of the shoveling and that sort of thing, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
First time I owned a home and I've never rented before, I just.
Gotcha. Well, and that's helpful information to me and the rest of council and the mayor and city staff. It's helpful, because maybe, maybe, maybe at some point we will discuss this, you know what I'm saying, but. I tend to agree with Alder, uh, Clark. It, it is what it is, it exists, the ordinance exists. We do our very best to contact people and let them know. I realize you were out of town and that's unfortunate. But, but beyond that, the, the responsibility still lies with the homeowner or the. Renter, in the case of a rental property, to take care of that, so. Anyway, thank you.
I.
Ryan?
Add that I just was looking through our past council admitting notes to see. Our last answer was on things like this. And as far as what happened to that reassessment fee portion, I actually couldn't find. I haven't, now obviously need a lot more time, but couldn't find where we actually made any changes based off of discussion we had last January, I think it was. Which is when it came up as a public works thing. And looks like last time this came up as an issue for discussion was in August of last year, or, yeah, last year. In which case we also denied a request. To try to reduce. The amount of money that was being asked for to cover this expense. But I also did want to add in that we do put out stuff in the water bill, it, I think it's usually put out several times, Inga, correct? About the snow removal fees, or is it just once a year that gets put out?
Um, this year it was in the one from November, I believe, but then I also post on our social media channels and. Those locations, just updates on snow removal information as well, but if there's other spots to try and put the information. I'm all ears, trying to hit as many people as possible with that information.
So, I would just say we try to put it out wherever we can, not sure what else we could put out that information so people can notice it, because there's a couple people every year who. Don't necessarily know that's an ordinance. And then I would add in that. Even though it happens every year, our, our numbers are requests, at least back in twenty twenty, we're still way down from where they were before, so. There still is some positive education that's occurred, just not, we have a lot of new people coming to town now.
Yep, we do. So I'll keep thinking about. I would like to be helpful, especially to. First time homeowners and new residents to our community. I think we do a really good job of trying to get that out there, but maybe there's some ideas that we can come up with to help. New folks that are coming to the city of Milton. Linda?
Did we, do we still do a new homer, homeowner's package?
No, and we haven't done that for many, many, many years.
It's, it's been as long as we've been doing the utility bill newsletters. Because we use the funds that we're using for that. For the, the bimonthly utility bill newsletters to hit people on a more regular basis with those communications.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, I would say that it's not always new homeowners that are actually coming up with this, or coming in and asking questions about this, or not. Shoveling. It's, I would say, if I had to guess, I imagine it's maybe even a fifty fifty type thing, I would know maybe a little better, but I don't think it's always new homeowners that are. Running across this.
Yeah, last, last year, both of them were two longtime. Established residents, one was a vacant lot that they had owned in their family for decades, so. Certainly.
There was another one that was a new homeowner that, that had just moved, but maybe that was a different ordinance.
Yeah, I certainly empathize with that, with the, with the rationale of, of a new homeowner not understanding the ordinances within a local municipality, I get that. But that's why I, that's why I kind of. Really talk about how we are vastly, vastly, vastly more generous than any community in our area. And we get far, 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 far more complaints about that than we do. One or two complaints about. Snow shoveling. We get probably thirty complaints a year about, why do you wait sixty hours? So. It's a, it's a circular conversation that I anticipate having every year.
So.
Yeah, I, I believe that we need, need to allow the charge to stand since it's consistent with our. With our ordinance. On the other hand, I think that we've had ample demonstration of the fact that the certified mail route. Does not work. And in fact, causes more problems than it, it solves. There have been mention of, you know, other methods of notification, a door hanger. That's placed on the door, that kind of thing. And, you know, I think we should revisit that, and what I would suggest is that when we do that, that. That Ms. Ashland be notified of. When that discussion is taking place, either for Public Works or, or the council. So that she can comment on whatever is decided moving forward. But I think that we should let the, the, the charge stand.
Okay, well, let's, um, Stephanie, I want to thank you for. For coming tonight, I know this is not. For coming tonight. I know this is not a very easy thing to do. Um. Your uh, meeting uh, with total strangers. Who um, are trying to work through the situation too, as well. As you're trying to work through it and um, to be consistent and fair with everyone. So I, I appreciate you taking the time. Um, well, I'm gonna have us. Move on to number ten, but if there's a difference discussion. About the policy around us, um, we will notify you so you can participate in that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you, Stephanie. Wait, Stephanie has something to say. Go ahead, Stephanie.
I was just saying good night.
Okay, good night.
Thanks for coming.
Don't have to stay the rest of the meeting. You can, but you don't have to. Linda?
Okay, I was just asking if she had, if she was interested in the, in. Any type of. Payment. For assistance since we have done that.
She can, I, she can contact City Hall.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Item number ten, discussion of possible action regarding the municipal agreement to purchase sodium chloride. On the Wisconsin DOT bid.
So every year the city, well, every year for the last several years, the city has joined in on the um. Wisconsin Department of Transportation salt bid program. So this is kind of a routine. Item here where we are just asking for approval to do that again. Um, for reference, last year. Uh, the bid amount was eighteen eighty-five ninety-five per ton. Uh, we had purchased a guaranteed delivery amount of five hundred and ninety-five tons for a total of. Just over fifty-one thousand dollars, so it's a large sum. Um, we're currently taking some deliveries that are ordered this week to determine how much salt we have remaining on this year's contract. And then at that point, we will. Determine how much we, we want to order for next, next winter season. Um, the order is due by March fourteenth, if we want to um, continue with this program. So uh, the recommendation there is to approve the municipal agreement to purchase sodium chloride on the WISDOT bid. And amount to be determined by the Public Works Director.
Larry?
Mark, I just had a question. I, I don't know enough about this. Uh, is this, can this be stored uh, uh, for a while? Is there like a end date or a? So it behooves us to buy it at a good price, I guess, is my question, right?
Yeah, so we store it in our salt sheds. Uh, the one behind the. Uh, building here at Northside Drive, and then we also have another storage over on. Chicago Street that was the old county storage facility. And then we have another facility at our old Public Works Garage over on Madison Avenue. Um, and we are able to store that from season to season, so.
Okay, I always wondered that. Thank you. I was just curious, so.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. To approve the municipal agreement to purchase sodium chloride. On Wes dot bed.
Is there a second?
Second.
And just to clarify that. That's in an amount to be determined by the Public Works Director, is that correct?
Yes.
All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding replacement of the effluent sampler. At the wastewater treatment facility. I don't know if I said that right, but whatever it is, Mark, you can explain it to us.
Well, the effluent sampler is um, it's kind of the last. Regular sample point at the treatment plant before our effluent, which is the treated wastewater is discharged. The current sampler has undergone some recent repairs using old parts and old equipment. Um, the sampler is from two thousand thirteen. So it's, and it's a vital piece of equipment to ensure that we're meeting our primary requirements. So we're just looking to uh, purchase a replacement for that. Um, wastewater staff obtained several quotes. Our recommendation is. To use the quote from William and Reed, which is not the lowest, but they do provide us other um. Services and support that we, we might not see uh, from the other quotes. One was, I think eBay and the USA Blue Book, so. The. Place difference on a few hundred dollars, maybe, well, maybe five hundred dollars, but the quotes are all attached. Um, if there's any questions, I can certainly try to answer those, otherwise. Um, we just recommend approving the purchase of a new wastewater treatment plan effluent sampler from William and Reed.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Linda? No questions. Ryan?
No questions.
Larry?
Uh, as I understand it, Mark, then this is the kind of the checkpoint. Right? To make sure that everything else that was happening before is adequately preparing that.
Yeah, so taking a, it's taking samples regularly. You know, daily, and it's collecting them, and then staff will take those samples and run. The testing that they're required to do, whether it's daily testing, weekly testing. Um, but it's a continuous sample sampler, so it's. Continuously taking a little bit of water out of the effluent stream. Making a composite sample that's unused for the testing.
So it's very critical then, in that case, thank you. Thanks for letting me ask.
Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the uh. Uh, bid with William Reed for the affluent. Uh, sampler at the cost of seven thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action to authorize the appointment of additional election officials for January twenty. Twenty-two through December twenty twenty-three election cycle.
Take that, um, in December of last year in two thousand twenty-one, we. The council appointed twenty-six community members as election officials. Uh, there have been eight additional people that have reached out that said that they are interested in participating as an election official. As we've been gearing up for the future elections, uh, this year, there are some people that have decided not to continue or they're. Have limited availability, so it's always great to have more people interested. Uh, and so we're hoping that we can appoint these people and possibly have a couple of them even on the April election.
Any questions or comments for anyone, Linda?
Um, you ha- have Amy Frederick on here twice. Is there?
I do, yes, you are correct. So there's actually seven, so we will not, there's not two different Amy Fredericks. Thank you for catching that. So.
I thought that too, Ryan.
Maybe she's into work twice as hard.
I was very excited. She was very excited.
Okay, is there a motion to authorize the appointment? Of seven. Larry?
I move to authorize the appointment of the. Elector. Help me, what's the correct term?
Election official.
Election officials, thank you, I was gonna say.
Okay, and this is for the January twenty-two through December twenty twenty-three election cycle.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding information from Rock County and CDC and masking requirements. So I don't know if you all. Got all the links that I sent out to you right before the meeting. Um, so we, the, we've been following um. Rock County and, and CDC on masking requirements. And um, wanted to. See if you have different thoughts on meeting in person or um. Any other discussion that you want to have on this? I think it's. Uh, I think the CDC did a nice job of kind of breaking down the information. Where you can look at the uh, Rock. Rock County, is that like a medium moderate? Amount of compute, uh, community spread, which if you go on that, the link that I um, shared with you, you can look that up yourself. Um, it talks about uh, personal risk uh, based on health factors and age and et cetera, so. Um, I think from the city's standpoint. We would. I can't remember exactly what the wording is and the policy, if we would just automatically. Go. We had different, when we originally did it, there were. There's a different dashboard, I think. So any thoughts on anything from anyone? Barry?
I would like to keep it optional, I, I. Um, I mean, I do like the, the Zoom meeting. And that's just from a personal viewpoint. My wife and I both got sick again this year. And um, it wasn't pleasant and my wife got very sick, so. Uh, and again, I work at a hospital, so I'm wearing a mask all the time, but. Uh, I, I bow to everybody else's opinions and, and views too, so. Uh, if we do open up the meetings, I will probably still wear my mask for a while, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Larry, ju- just to clarify, when you said optional, are you talking about masks or the meeting being optional? Whether it's, you, whether you attend virtually or in person?
Oh, no, I guess I think I meant more the mask.
Okay, I just wanted to understand for myself, thank you.
Not gonna criticize anybody who sits next to me. Who doesn't wear one, but I, I'm gonna personally keep wearing mine for a while with this. So that's my input. Um, I think it'd be too hard for doing some of us. There and some of us online, I just. It's difficult, so.
With our current system, it is a little clunky to have. One of the council members not physically there and trying to appear virtually, so. That's. It's, it's not the best system right now. It, it functions, it's just not, not where I'd like it to be, I guess.
Understood. You know, not your fault either, so.
Larry, um, Linda?
Um, I would, I guess, right now, my preference would be to continue with the Zoom meetings. Um, as, as far as um, City Hall and our um, other buildings. I guess. I guess I'd kind of like to hear what this City Hall and what these, what are. People think. Do they want, do they feel comfortable with not having a mask, not themselves not wearing a mask? Or are the shields that they're working behind sufficient? I guess I'd kind of like, I would kind of want a little more of that input.
Well, the policy that you adopted was to follow the Rock County CDC, what their recommendations are. And their recommendations are. A little bit, there is no mask mandate, there isn't even necessarily a mask recommendation. It, it's really based on your individual situation.
I'd actually like to see us go back to being in person. I think that we've had, you know. This is nice and it's helped us pandemic, but I think in person, I kind of feel like it. Is a little better in some ways we interact, provides a little better interaction to some extent. I think it's fine if. Master an optional thing. Um, that follows with what the CDC is. With the CDC stuff that you sent, says. To an extent, but I think it's time to go back to in person again. Otherwise, when do we decide to go back in person?
Yeah, Bill?
Just wanted some uh, clarification. I, I think there's. Another virtual uh, option. Uh, that was a virtual option that was in place before Zoom came along. Uh, that was a telephone conference call. I know that I have participated in uh, council meetings in the past, uh, when I was out of town. Uh, by telephone. Um, and so I think. Uh, as Inga said, it's clunky trying to do, unless you have a. Precise setup intended for that purpose, it's clunky trying to do uh, hybrid. Uh, in person and uh, Zoom sessions. Uh, however, um, I think that we can allow. Uh, participation either by the public or by council members. Uh, via telephone, uh, should we return to uh, meeting uh, in person. And um, you know, I'd support that, that sort of hybrid. Uh, moving forward.
Well, and is it possible to livestream our meeting on YouTube or something like that, Inga?
I, I have become fairly proficient at doing it, um, live streams via YouTube now, so. Um, this, the next meeting would be my fourth, so I think we could do that if the council wanted to do that. I, I've been hesitant in the past to livestream just because. I wasn't able to monitor it because at the time I was also taking minutes. Um, but now Jenny's on board, so she's taking the minutes, so I have a little bit, um, a little bit more flexibility to. Pay attention to that livestream and make sure that it's functioning properly, so I feel comfortable doing that.
If we had to do that, and if you're live streaming on YouTube, then if people have questions or, or something that's. A topic, on topic for what we're talking about. In theory, they could. Put a message on YouTube, right, that you could see and then relay if need be.
Yeah, so I tried the live chat feature once with the human trafficking community panel that we did, and I just had a bunch of. Random bots, I think they're called, commenting on it. So that makes me just a little bit nervous about what um, type of content could be added in there, so I'd probably. Disabled the live chat feature, but if there's. Um, another option that we can come up with, then, then that might be available too, or it's just a contacted advance. But I see Mark has unmuted himself, so I'm going to stop talking now.
Yes, well, what was suggested uh, in terms of uh, on the chat feature that works when you're all. Doing what you're doing right now. On Zoom, because everybody who's participating in the Zoom conference can see it. Uh, if you're gonna be meeting live in, at the City Hall. Uh, not everybody's going to be able to see that. And I think that would be a problem legally. Certainly based upon the guidance that was given by uh. The state early on in the pandemic. The key is. To what extent can everybody who wants to participate in the meet, participate in the meeting? Hear and see and or see what's going on. Uh, so as noted, even before the pandemic, the phone conference was allowed. And in my opinion, that was entirely appropriate. Because when a person on the phone was speaking, everybody in the, in the room could hear what they're saying. And so that, that is fine, and then who's ever on the phone can hear what anybody else is saying in the room. So that is, that is fine, but. I, in my opinion, it would be problematic to have a feature where only some people can see it.
Or if you're on a bus.
But uh, I am curious, I, Linda brought up a good point if I may jump in, but. Um, I, I am curious as to what. Our, our, our staff and employees. Feel or what they're thinking. So that's very important because a lot of you will be attending those meetings, so.
I was gonna say, I can only speak for myself. I think if, if there is, if that is a question, and I think it's a valid question. We certainly could take some sort of. Informal or anonymous poll of, of employees. I don't know that everybody would feel comfortable answering that question. Um, and I don't want to speak on anybody else's behalf. The, the guidance that. Uh, or the, the, the policy, for lack of a better term, that the council has adopted up to this point is to follow the CDC guidelines, and that's what we've been doing. So, um, if the CDC guidelines now are optional. Um, then that's how we would proceed and, and hopefully anybody who wishes to continue to wear a mask. Will feel comfortable in doing so. And if there is a situation in which somebody's wearing a mask and they feel uncomfortable. I would hope that they would feel comfortable in reporting that to me and as to what their rationale is for feeling uncomfortable, whether that's ridicule from other employees or. Uh, fear of other employees who aren't wearing masks. Um, you know, it's, it's a, I think it's um, you know, we would probably be no different than any other organization. We're just a microcosm of the world. Um, some people are. Very attuned to it and others aren't. Um, so if that's, we certainly could, I guess my point is we. I would feel uncomfortable speaking for anybody other than myself, but I could ask, we could ask if, if folks. Well, you know, would care to share their opinion.
And we don't have to necessarily. Vote on it. tonight with Teresa and Devon being gone. I am mindful that, go ahead.
I think the policy, you know, again, the policy that we've adopted says follow the CDC guidelines, as the CDC guidelines change and ebb and flow. I guess therefore de facto, so does our policy. You know, unless there, unless there is additional direction given from the council. So how we have proceeded is that, you know, masks are optional at City Hall, because that was the new guidance that came out from the CDC on Friday. Individuals, I still see individuals wearing masks who come into City Hall, some do, some don't. And our staff continues to wear a mask when helping the public, if that's their, if that's their prerogative.
I was just thinking about whether when when to start meeting in person. So I don't think the Go ahead, Larry.
Well, I don't mean to jump in. Could I suggest that we would try to begin meeting in person in April? And give it another good month, because things are going down, they're trending down, and that's very positive.
Yeah, we could even do it like I know it would probably be a weird time, but the second meeting in April, since the first meeting, we have the elections, right? The first Tuesday, so that would give anybody time to get sick and recover by the by the end of April, if they got at the elections.
Give our committees time to, to adjust accordingly or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. I, I also think it's, we would operate under the assumption that if anybody tested positive, they would let us all know immediately. If they had a positive, so, so we could take precautions too. Bill?
I, I would move we return to meeting in public on, for the City Council meeting of April nineteenth.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Sorry, I'm gonna post. Okay, I'm gonna see all your bright shiny faces. Some of you, maybe? I guess we'll wait till the April elections. I don't know who I'll be at the, at the second meeting, but.
Can I jump in with a policy question quick? I, I am I should know this, but I don't. Whether this is a CDC guideline or not, it has been a policy that employees who are unvaccinated need to be masked in our facilities. I don't know that the CDC changes impact that, if that was a local policy. I'd like some clarification on. I do believe that the CDC's changing guidelines on Friday did address that. And irrespective of vaccination status, masks are optional. I would like to get some clarification on that to a degree of certainty, but that is at least my understanding at this time, based on the information I have. Is that vaccination status is no longer a determining factor of masks. It comes down to county widespread and individual prerogative.
And so just to confirm, the council is in agreement to continue to follow the CDC guidelines? Okay, and my other question is for the future meeting on April nineteenth. Do you want me to livestream that onto YouTube?
Can we vote on that, Mark? Is that, does that fit enough into this, or is that a separate agenda item?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna, I just wanted to ask Mark if that's something we could vote on under this agenda item, or if we need to put it on a future agenda?
Well, certainly you can put it on a future agenda, then there's no issue about it. Is it related, it's certainly related to your information about the COVID and masking recommendations. I think it was brought up in terms of if there's any members of the public who would be reluctant to meet there in person with, with you. Is there an option for them to view what's going on? And there, that would be an option, although they could not participate in the meeting at, by live streaming. So I think, yeah, so I would suggest just I mean, that's just my interpretation, but since you have plenty of time until April nineteenth, I would just suggest putting it on the next agenda. And then you can confirm that.
Okay, and Inga, does that answer your question, or you have a question that you'll hold off for the next agenda?
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I was getting the council chambers prepared for in-person meetings appropriately. So, yeah, if there's any other questions, I guess, or ideas on anything, let me know and we'll start preparations.
Okay. All right, review of two thousand, January two thousand and twenty-two, or review of preliminary December two thousand and twenty-one financial statements.
So the preliminary December twenty twenty-one financial statements are attached. We are still going through the background and crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is, and the audit is next week, but these are preliminary. Everything's done to the best of my knowledge at this point.
All the, any questions or comments? No?
Well, I have a question.
Okay, Larry?
No, see, just a quick one. So after the audit, then we will finalize. Is that kinda how that works? Does that make sense, or are those two separate things perhaps?
Hope that's correct. So once the audit's done, those will be our final no changes numbers after audit happens, and they'll be presented again.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Brian?
No questions.
Okay. Okay, then review of January two thousand and twenty-two financial statements.
And twenty twenty-two keeps moving, even though we're in twenty twenty-one still. So the January twenty twenty-two financial statements are attached. I don't see anything of concern starting off the year.
Any questions for anybody? Okay, general items, committee reports. Any committee reports? Okay, any staff reports? Any? I'll start with you.
Oh, which one of us did you call?
I think she said Jenny, I missed her, so.
Sorry.
Go first if you want, Scott.
Like, what the heck did I say?
So last night, Charlotte Walker and Bob Seals from the Plan Commission, along with Inga, myself and Mark Langer, attended the zoning and landings workshop in Jamesville. And as part of that event, they did offer a Plan Commission handbook and a zoning Board of Appeals handbook. So if anyone's interested, we are able to make copies of those. If anyone would like to review them, they are available digitally and in hard copy. Then on another note, I just approved our ballots for the April election. So we're moving through that, and so hopefully in the next week, we will have those ballots to start sending them out for the absentees. That's all I have.
Did you, did you like the?
Yes, the speaker did very well. And then we had some people from Rock County come up to us and give us some ideas for conditional use permits, variances, going over our procedures. I thought it was a very detailed, but also a broad overview of everything for variances, conditional use permits, planning in general. So it was a great group of people. It was a huge amount of people, I think, for the room, which was amazing. You had everything from town officials to city staff and then board members. So it was just, like I said, it was a big group and you could bounce a lot of ideas off each other. So I think it was worth it. And I'll let you know if we have any future ones too.
Great, great. Thanks for giving us that update. Yeah, that might be nice. Is this the first time they've done it? Or do they do this regularly?
The person that gave the instructions, she does workshops continually. However, I don't know if she does them in Rock County very often. So I can ask that question, but yeah, she didn't give an indication of if she's done it in this area.
That would be great. It would be great to send newly elected officials to something like that, but also we can provide the handbook stuff to everybody.
And one item that came up was zoning Board of Appeals. They do a separate workshop specifically for zoning Board of Appeals. And so that's something to look forward to. In the future, they're planning, they are planning to do some virtual options. But again, they didn't give a lot of detail of when.
Thanks, Kelsey.
I don't have any updates tonight.
Thank you for giving us that update. I know. Mark, weather report? Snow report?
I, I don't have much. More, it's raining later in the week.
That's it. There's like nothing going on at DPW. Okay, that's good to know.
I mean, if you want the nitty gritty, but, you know, working on sewer televising.
Okay, we've been waiting all year for this? Okay, um, let's see, Ashley from the library.
Our friends of the Milton Public Library sale is going on throughout the month of March during library hours. So please come buy some books, a lot of books. And then we have reposted for the project coordinator position made available through the CDC's drug-free community grant. So we will begin reviewing applications on Monday for that.
All right, I do not know that applications are gonna be reviewed on Monday. So Chief Mark.
So no excuses to give the school district, and I blew it in January. And we forgot about Wisconsin's Crossing Guard Recognition Week. And we decided they still deserve one, so we're doing our own. So this week is Milton's Crossing Guard Recognition Week. So we're showing our appreciation to all of our crossing guards and doing some visits and some photo ops and watch social media for that. And just wanna once again, in this public forum, thank them for everything that they do to keep our childrens.
Um, as Ashley said, the project coordinator position is reposted. We, we set it up as a continuous recruitment, but we're going to start reviewing applications on Monday. So we've received a few, and we're going to hopefully continue to receive some through Monday, and we'll start reviewing them then, and hopefully set up interviews. We also are recruiting for probably up to three seasonal employees for the Public Works Department. We initially set a deadline of March first, but we extended that to March thirteenth. I think just with all the snow, people weren't really thinking about summer yet. So we extended that deadline. Hopefully we'll get a few more applications for the team at Public Works to review in, probably on March fourteenth, we'll start that review and then set up interview times. I've been working with our leadership team on setting up performance evaluations for their staffs, staff members, and then working through, you know, a variety of different situations that come up for particular employees and trying to make those evaluations flow to the best of our ability using the perform system through NeoGov. So that's where I'm at.
All right, thanks, Al.
I feel bad. I kinda had an hour-long staff update at the beginning of this meeting, but that was mostly focused in retrospect. As kinda talk about every, it seems like every other week, we have you know, development projects. I anticipate having a TIF development agreement on the next agenda for the signature warehousing project. And we continue discussions for some commercial recreational uses out by the QuickTrip. Those conversations are ongoing, and we are working with a new residential development on the north side of town. This is different than Journey Hills. But this is the old Bonnie Mead Golf Course. So those are all kind of in the works.
All right, great. Anything else for anybody before I go to Ryan? I didn't miss anybody. Okay, all right, Brian?
Consideration of a motion can be into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five subsection one subsection C. The statute's considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This case, city staff evaluations.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, so we're gonna go into closed session now. We are back in open session. We don't have anything to take action on, as far as I'm aware. Our next meeting date is March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And if I remember correctly, that will again be by Zoom.
It would be twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-two. It says twenty-two. There is no mistake on the agenda. I just looked at it and I said twenty-two and I said twenty-one. I know. I'm beyond help tonight, I guess. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? All right, I'll see you guys March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.